Are you ready? Good evening, the City Council, LRA Board for the City of Riverbank for Tuesday, December 13th, 2022 is now in session. This meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code, Section 545953 subdivision Echo of the Ralph and Brown Act, California Government Code 54950 at SEC. The federal Americans with disabilities, while this meeting is will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19. Member of the public may also participate and comment via Zoom virtual platform. Refer to the last page of the agenda for participation information. Please rise.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please, ma'am, standing.
Let's pray. Father, Lord, we just come before you tonight. We thank you for this great city of Riverbank. God, we think, thank you, God, just what an amazing year as we come to the end of this year, Lord, of all the business that's taken place for this city. Lord, the decisions that have been made, we're so grateful for this great council that's before us. Lord, that their best interest is what is best for Riverbank. Lord, I pray for the presentations tonight, Lord, and the special business and Lord Vice Mayor Cal Campbell and his dedication to the city and all that's going to be done tonight. Lord, we truly ask for unity, that, God, we would be in one mind and one spirit, and though we have an opportunity to share our concerns. God, I just pray that at the end of the day that we would move forward doing our part to make sure that Riverbank is the best city in Stanislas County to live. And this, we give you all the glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Here.
Mayor O'Brien.
Here.
There'll be no changes to the agenda tonight. Any council authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations. Presentation on the hottest in action, Women in Action Organization. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Christina Avalos, representing Mujeres Mexicanas in Action, a bi-national organization USA-Mexico. And I'm going to give you a little bit of information about the event that we're planning to have June 24th and 25th of June 2003 at this community center. The objective is to promote the art and culture from four different states, which is Michoacan, Jalisco, Zacatecas, and Guanajuato. The program will include music, live music, dancers from those four states, also food, and also games, cultural games for the kids. We're also going to have, we're planning to have informational booths and also cultural material like things that they bring from those states. Last, last event that we had, we only have one state, so this time we're planning to have more booths around the park of the community center. So basically, it's promote the art and culture for those four states. And we're also going to include gifts and raffles for the people, and those come from the sponsors that we're going to have at this event. I already spoke with Sue and also with the sergeant from the police department, they gave me good suggestions about how to be, how to have a very successful event. I don't know if you have any questions?
Are there any questions? We wish you success on your, your event in June, and I will be there just to give you any hands that you may need.
It'll be an honor. Thank you, and all of you are cordially invited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is, next one is recognition of the Public Works Director, Michael Rydell. Mr. Rydell.
Mayor and City Council, as Michael comes up, we would like to thank him for his 11 years of service to the City of Riverbank. As his final day with us is going to be this Friday, December 16th.
Let's be polite tonight, well, not be polite, I'm sorry. Michael Rydell, in appreciation and recognition, we are dedicated in loyal service to the City of Riverbank for 11 years. From December 2011 till December 2022. Congratulations on your retirement, and I guess you've become a nomad.
Yes, sir.
Michael, it has been an honor to congratulate you.
It certainly has.
Please give us a quick address.
I see Kerry staring at me from the back row, so, ugly. About us, so, the first thing that I would like to do is to thank everybody here, staff, all the council. And it's been a privilege working here for the last 11 years. This wasn't a job, this was a family. Yeah, it's tough to leave, and I've been doing this for a very long time, and we have been planning for a very long time to, to go ahead and become a nomad, as the mayor alluded to, which basically for probably the next year or so, me and my wife are going to travel. But that being said, I, I was part of the, the hiring of individuals that came in to replace me. Cody, who's in the back and will get introduced to you, and I think he's going to be an excellent director, and I think he's not going to skip a beat. I hope maybe he has a little trouble filling my shoes, but I don't think it's going to be much. So I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to let me work here.
Thank you, Michael.
Michael, on behalf of all the city staff, we thank you so much for all of your service. We really appreciate all your work, your leadership to the Public Works Department, and the legacy you leave behind, as you mentioned, there's going to be some difficult shoes to fill, but we're excited to have Cody here with us.
Okay, so, can I go ahead and introduce?
Well, you can introduce, and that means.
So that'll take us to the next.
Sit down, sit down, boss, I got it. So Cody Bridgewater, who's coming up to here right now, is, is the one that's taking and filling the position I had, he will be the new Public Works Director. And he'll also be the new LRA Director, unfortunately for him. So I'd like to go ahead.
Mayor, members of council, residents, it's an honor to have the ability to serve you. I am a resident myself, and I look forward to being able to provide everything that Michael was able to, and like he said, there are some big shoes to fill, and he has created a tremendous crew that I've already witnessed there, so I hope to be able to build upon that as well, and look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Thank you, welcome, welcome, Cody. Next item presentation regarding the future sewer connection fee updates.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Over the course of the past couple of months, the City Council has been discussing the proposed regional recycled water project here in the City of Riverbank. One of the components of which we will listen to in a few minutes during the public hearing were the rates that were proposed for our residential customers at this point in time. A second component of that, though, is a fee that will be charged directly to new development in order to be able to have them, number one, buy into our current system and for any potential expansion that's necessary to serve their specific development. And so we do have a brief presentation to you tonight with regards to the sewer connection or capacity fees, as we're going to classify those as by Eric from, oh, sorry, Doug Dove with Bartle Wells Associates. Bartle Wells also prepared our sewer rate study, and so they are currently evaluating the sewer capacity fees. So tonight's discussion is merely a presentation on the background of what those fees entail, and then we will look to present figures to the City Council in January.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public. My name is Doug Dove, consultant with Bartle Wells Associates, and we have worked with the city staff, the engineers, to develop funding and rates to fund the new wastewater treatment plant that the city is embarking on. And part of that process is updating capacity fees for new development, so that new development, when they connect to the system, they pay a fair portion of, a fair charge when they connect, so that existing ratepayers do not subsidize future growth. And so what I'm going to present right now is just about eight slides about that capacity fee for the wastewater treatment plant. And so, as I mentioned, these, these are fees only for new development, and they are paid when a new business or residence is connected to the system, and it's a fair share of the, the cost of the system. And if somebody expands their home or, or business, that may also result in a capacity fee. Later in the meeting, I'm going to talk about the user fees, the sewer rates, and that's something that's paid by existing customers, but this would be only for new growth. And you already have certain capacity fees for the collection system, and this new fee would be for the wastewater treatment plant. And so our objectives are obviously to levy a fair and equitable fee on new growth, we, we don't want to overcharge. But we want to recover a fair share from new growth, so that existing customers aren't subsidizing and comply with government codes and, and the laws and use standard methodologies. There's a part of the government code, Section 66013, that kind of sets forth the, the requirements for developing these capacity fees. And so we followed those, and our study will calculate a maximum charge. And that will be used to pay for a portion of the wastewater plant, we estimate about 30% of the new wastewater treatment plant will be for new growth, so that will allow the city to continue to grow and prosper. And so that share will be funded by these capacity fees. We're using an approach called an expansion cost approach, there's a number of different approaches, this is a standard one where we're looking at the cost of the new treatment plant, dividing it by the capacity and coming up with a unit rate. And so roughly about 30% of the, the plant is for new growth, and so that's how the fee will be developed. And the fees typically they're adopted, you know, once every five to 10 years, and in the interim, they're adjusted using a cost of living adjustment called the ENR Construction Cost Index. So we recommend that. So we're going to be coming back in January with detailed charges and options to review, but we wanted to just let you know that it's an important part of the funding for the project for the wastewater treatment plant, and that is the capacity fee. And we will be back later on to talk about the wastewater rate recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? In the 30% new growth that you mentioned, while you're doing your, your rate studies, that's not included because that is not yet collected, correct?
Correct, that.
But again, as you collect that, the fees that you, you set out there, start to decrease.
Yes, the idea is the capacity fees will be used to offset the cost of the new treatment plant, so that the fees for existing customers will be lower.
Right.
And so everyone pays their fair share.
But as you, you build your structure, you have to assume you have no additional costs except for current users.
Exactly.
Okay.
The existing users are the ones who are here today, and they, we know they're, you know, they're here, so we expect a lot of growth, but you can never predict the future.
True.
I have a question. So this is basically a one-time charge, right, for new development?
That is correct, a one-time charge on hookup when you connect to the system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So let's continue. Thank you very much. I know we'll be saying more. But continue on with the consent calendar. Item 8, 8-1, wave readings, item 8-2, approval of November 8th, 2022, City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes. Items 8-3, approval of November 15th, Special City Council Minutes. Item 8-4, acceptance of Santa Fe Street between 5th and 7th Street Project and authorization to file a notice of completion. Item 8-5, a resolution reciting the fact of the consolidated Riverbank General Municipal Election held on November 8th, 2022, and declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law. Item 8-6, a resolution approving the appointment of John Dynan, Tidy Zamora, and Altonet Steve Link, and Michael Haldeman to the Planning Commission effective January 2023. Do I have anyone wishing to pull any items? Any comments? I'd like a consideration from the council.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
No, second.
I have a motion to approve, and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 9, public hearing, item 9-1, a public hearing for proposed wastewater sewer rate increase. One, open the Proposition 218 public hearing and receive written protest to the proposed rate increase for wastewater sewer services. And two, adopt a resolution accepting and closing the Proposition 218, public notification and protest process as it relates to the proposed rate increases for wastewater sewer services. And three, consider adopting a resolution approving the proposed wastewater sewer rates. This item is contingent upon the results of the protest process.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. On September 27th, the City Council provided city staff direction with moving forward with the protest hearing or Proposition 218 process for the consideration of new sewer rates. This protest hearing did require a certain process to be followed after City Council considered a phased-in approach to these rates. And so I'd like to bring Doug back up to the podium so that he can discuss that process, how the rates were developed.
Thank you. Good evening again. I would just like to give a brief summary of the, the rate development process, and we had gone into detail on September 27th before you, and so I just want to provide a summary of what was presented then and what is before you tonight. So the the city adopted wastewater rates in 2015, and that was a five-year phased-in increase. Those, those have been implemented, and the sewer enterprise is now facing the need for a new wastewater treatment plant. And that's, you know, a big upgrade, it's an expensive piece of infrastructure, but as we know, these things have to be done to, to treat the water to standards meeting the state, state and federal requirements. So your sewer enterprise or the sewer fund is a self-supporting fund. In other words, it, it doesn't get property taxes or federal money or city money, it's supported by ratepayers, by the rates and charges that people pay for their sewer service. And so those sewer rates need to be set at adequate levels to fund the, the operating costs of the sewer system as well as the capital, you know, the new cost for facilities. And so currently, your, your sewer rates are not adequate to meet the needs of funding the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So, oops, I'm going the wrong way. So we are recommending sewer rates, and we've proposed the rates, presented a report of the rates, and a Prop 218 notice was mailed out to ratepayers with the proposed rates. And these are to meet the annual funding needs of the utility and reflect the cost of service, so that nobody's paying more than their fair share, and comply with all legal requirements. And the goal is to minimize the impact on sewer ratepayers to the extent possible while achieving the, the funding requirements. And so what we're, we've developed is a set of maximum rates that have been noticed in the Prop 218 notice. And the, the reason they're the maximum rates is that we are hoping to qualify for a significant amount of grants. $15 to $25 million worth of grants. And in order to do that, we are required to approve rates without, assuming we get no grants. So that's a worst case. We believe that the, the rates that are being adopted or, or proposed are higher than what will actually be needed. But we are required, before we can get grants and loans, to, to adopt the rates at these levels. So Prop 218 governs increasing rates in California, and that was part of a voter-approved constitutional amendment in 1996. And it provides requirement substantive requirements and procedural requirements. The substantive requirements are that we have to do a rate study, we have to allocate the costs, and develop a, a set of rates that's proportional and fair. And then the procedural requirements is, are we, we have to mail a notice of those rates with the proposed rates to the property owners and customers at least 45 days before the public hearing. So those rates are subject to a majority protest, and the city has complied and mailed out the notices at least 45 days prior to this public hearing. And so if 50% or more of the property owners, customers protest the, the rates, then the, the council would not be allowed to go forward with those. So after the public hearing, the, the protests will be counted. Oops, I keep going the wrong way. Okay, so briefly, your costs, you can see with the wastewater treatment plant project are, are going to go up significantly. And again, this is without any grants, and the increases needed are 18% in the first year, 18 the second, 18 the third, 17 the fourth, and 15% in the fifth year. Very significant, but that is without any grants, and we hope to get a lot of grants. Now, the rates that were noticed in the Prop 218 for single-family homes currently paying just under $50 a month, that would go to $58.39 the first year, and that would be fiscal 22, 23, and then 20, in the following year, it would go up to $68.90 per month, then $81.30 per month, $95.12 per month, and then at the fifth year, and this is with no grants, $109.39. So we hope to have rates that are actually much lower than that when we, we get the grants, and, and we, we have, you know, good faith that we're going to get at least 15 million in the grants. But we're being required to adopt these rates at these levels before we can receive the grants. So how do your rates compare to surrounding communities? Your current rate is the black bar here, it's about $50, $49.48. It's in the middle of the pack on the lower side, and then with the, the first increase, you're going to go up, you'll still be in the middle of the pack, but higher, higher in the middle of the pack, but remember, the rest of these communities are going to be facing inflationary and cost pressures as well, so their rates will likely go up. So their rates will likely go up somewhat as well. And so you know, this is a projection of of the rates. And you're still not going to be the highest in the region. You'll be in the middle, middle range. So we recommend that you go forward with the rate maximums that are proposed. And prior to implementing the the rates for fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, review, you know, the amount of grants that were received and the actual costs and adjust the the rates downward so that it'll be less of a burden on on rate payers. And obviously, update the connection or capacity fees, as I mentioned earlier. So with that, open it up for questions.
Do we have any questions before we open the public hearing?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so if we are able to get, like you said, the fifteen million in grants, maybe this is a question for Marty Salas, our city manager. So if we're able to lower the rates, what would that look like? How would we give that money back to the to the rate payers?
So normally, what we would do is upon adoption, we would implement the rates. These rates in particular would go in effect as of January first. Once we receive notification of the grant funds being available, then we would be able to provide that information to Bartle Wells Associates in order to discuss what the potential rate impact for the second year could potentially look like. So it's most likely the second year where we would have a full amount of information on whether we've received the grants or not to be able to create that financial picture for the future years.
Okay, so it would be like a credit if we were able to lower the amount? Would it look like that?
Most likely, what we would do is it would be a credit in the sense that there would be funds in the reserve that could help to offset future rate increases.
Oh, great, okay.
Just a quick follow-up. So is there a reason why we would freeze the the payment for the entire year and not backtrack into the into the year?
Normally, that would prove to be more difficult in terms of being able to provide credits to the residents. You would probably want to take into consideration all of the funds that have been collected throughout the year so that it remains consistent for our residents. And then in addition, all of the grants that we have been officially awarded, we could factor those in for the new rates, correct?
That would be the same on new development as they start paying. But most of that will be beyond the the last year where you start getting true value. Will that then reduce the overall cost to the consumer as we go forward? For example, we have proposed right now five thousand new homes.
Right.
Okay, they're going to provide thirty or more percentage points of the new construction. So we can't just assume that we're going to take thirty percent off of year one, two, and three. But year four, we might be able to start adjusting downward. As we get out to year twenty, when we're built out, how does all of those fees? Where do those go? I mean, we're not going to have them in a reserve of that magnitude.
Right, and it's envisioned that there would be borrowing for a portion of the project, perhaps seventy million dollars of debt. And so as those capacity fees come in, those can be used to pay the debt service each year. And so that would reduce the the impact on the on the rate payers in the future years.
In the future years, but not in the first five years.
Possibly the first five.
And now, I know we've we've applied for grants.
Right.
What was total amount that we've applied for?
So we have submitted the first application in the amount of, if you can confirm, fifty million.
Fifty million. Okay, so if we did this three years ago, our costs were significantly less. And that didn't happen. But now costs are beginning to go back down. So what we're estimating now is at peak timing. And if in four or five years our cost goes down, everything is adjusted downward, correct?
Correct, yeah. And we've done this in a lot of communities where we, you know, we initially adopt a five-year step increase. And that allows us, opens up the grant opportunities. And then as the grants become, you know, obtained and realized, then we can shave off the 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 later year increases.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just one last comment is that this year, twenty twenty-three, is the year of the most available funding ever in U.S. history. And we need to capitalize every grant opportunity from the feds and the state for the amount of monies that they have available for these type of projects, water projects, and also recycled water. So those are, we have to capitalize on those grant opportunities as we move forward. The minimize the the expenses as we increase.
So Mayor, I do have a few last slides that we're going to go through before going through the public comment. And this is just more informational.
I did a little bit of math, and I just want to remind the public because I think sometimes you may forget this. You get your bill in our community every two months. But if you break it down, because I did it with my own, you're daily getting water, sewage, and garbage with what you're paying for. My particular bill was about five dollars a day. So I feel there's somewhere an average right now, and it'll go up a little bit as we go on. But some of it's going to be lower than what I do and some of it higher. But understand that you're paying for a daily, this daily service each day of the month. And when it's, when you actually get it, it's a bigger sum. But when you break it down by the day, it's cheaper than going out and buying hamburger. Thank you.
So just to provide some additional information, since twenty sixteen, the city council has been having discussions regarding the regional recycled water project. As the mayor mentioned, this year and these past two years in particularly, in particular, there have been a larger amount of opportunities for the city to apply for grants, which is why this component is important to the expansion and the upgrade of our wastewater treatment plant. We did make our sewer rate study available to members of the public, starting as of September twenty-seventh, which was part of the meeting agenda where we discussed the type of project that we were going to do. City council decided on a phased in project rather than doing the project as a whole. The project as a whole would have included some additional redundant systems in order to provide for some expanded capacity on the recycled water portion of it. And we did post that on the city website for public review after the issuance of the public notice to our residents. Proposition two eighteen does require, as was earlier mentioned, that property owners receive notification at least forty-five days prior to the public hearing. We did, as a precautionary measure, send both notices to our notices to both the property owners. We understand that there are property owners that live out of the city as they may have rental units here. So we wanted to make sure that they received a copy of that notification at that mailing address. And then we also sent one to the property location. So if there were any tenants living in the home, then the tenant was also made aware of the proposed increase. And the notice was sent to members of the public at least fifty-four days before the public hearing, which exceeded the forty-five day minimum. And just through the financial review for the rates, as we, as Doug earlier mentioned, he is looking at current capital needs with regards to the wastewater treatment plant, a current and future operational needs, potential financing costs if necessary, if we're not successful in obtaining as many grants as we hope we will. And then, of course, it takes into consideration existing reserves. We do have current allocations within the reserves of approximately four point five million in the twenty fifteen rate study projects that have not been completed. That four point five million dollar amount is a twenty fifteen figure. So we're going to have to adjust for the completion of those projects to twenty twenty-two figures. And those will be projects that we will be working on within the next couple of years. The majority of those projects are with regards to our sewer collection system, and it's upgrading a lot of sewer main lines that have probably been in existence over sixty years. And that is all. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I'm going to open a public hearing. Individuals.
At this time, I will call on you to come to the podium for your public comment regarding the hearing. Mr. Diego Hernandez?
Before the time starts, I just want to ask, has the time clock been used in other previous council meetings?
Yes.
It has been in use?
Yes.
So will it be used this time?
Yeah.
Will it be firm or will you, if the conversation? I don't think anyone expects a filibuster today. Okay, so my name is Diego Hernandez. I've been a city of Riverbank, resident of Riverbank since two thousand and eight. My concerns is that we are not paying for growth with growth. We do have needs in our infrastructure. Obviously, it's an older, and we also, I spoke with Michael, he made himself available. And he said that we do have certain requirements that California imposes that we have to look forward to and fix the water plant or do upgrades to the water plant. In our case, Michael said that the water plant may, we can't really work on the footprint that it has now. We have to build something new. My concern more than anything is that there's projections of growth that are not sustained. I've been working in finance for ten years. I work in real estate. I am a mortgage lender. And for the last ten years or more, the growth of Riverbank has been less than one percent. And the California Department of Finance actually said that from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, most cities similar to Ripon, Riverbank, and the like actually lost population, about one point one percent loss. In the September twenty-seventh meeting, I believe, when Eric Cowell was speaking, someone else took the mic and said that maybe in twenty years, we'll have fifty thousand in population. That's obviously not realistic. That's not realistic. And then the last thing, and more importantly, is we're doing all these things, but we've never done an update to our master plan for the sewer. I have the last one. It's from two thousand and seven. And this one actually shows the trunk line that runs to the subplanning area five, which is where the Riverwalk is proposed. And it still shows the trunk line. And if I go and I look at the same map from de novo planning for the Riverwalk, it shows the same trunk line passing over the San Osos River. The timing of this seems like it was done because you guys are anticipating the development. And obviously, from the size from Bartle Wells and Associates and information from KSN is saying that thirty percent of the capacity is specifically for growth. So what growth? Where's it coming from? Are we going to assume that going into a higher interest rate environment? Because if we're tackling inflation, it could be worse than what you think. You guys are older than I am. I'm only thirty-eight years old. You may remember what inflation was like in the late nineteen seventies and the early eighties. If we end up in a situation where inflation is even higher than that, which I anticipate inflation should be here for at least the next three, four years, we're not going to get that growth, but we're going to get stuck with the bill. And that's my concern is that's among other things that I would like to comment on. But I see that I have twenty seconds left.
Thank you very much.
Sorry if I if I mispronounce this. Oh, it's Mr. Haskellmore.
Haven't been here for a while. There's a lot of reasons for that. And I knew that when you increased the water, the sewer and everything else for five years, years ago, I knew that, I told everyone, I said, in the near future, after that, mine is going to increase everything again, but just the sewer. But still, yet it is a terrible increase. It's over twice as much a month for just the sewer. And that's too high. The money the city is saving. I helped get you elected, Jones and Calum. The money that you city Riverbank is saving, but just this one thing alone, is in the millions. I remember you talking about sewer. You always need money for sewer. Update the sewer plant down here. Our pumps, everything's been outdated ever since you've been in office. But the money you're saving, just alone, we used to be responsible from the back of a curb of sidewalk to the way out in the middle of the street. After that, it was after you. We were going to be charged a thousand dollars, Mike Riddle told me, for the wire in the street. And yeah, you told me that. And we were responsible to hire a contractor that was licensed to go on the street. We can't do it as a homeowner, we got license. So we had to pay a contractor to do that part of the plumbing for us. And then Mike takes it from there, okay? Didn't happen in my case. My case, my plumbing bill is twenty feet to the street from the back of sidewalk. My bill was ten thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. As you know, I've called you several times. I called Mike several times. He wouldn't even accept me in his office. Okay? Because I had to put ninety feet of sewer line, SDR seventeen and SDR twenty-six in that street, on Stanislaw Street. I found a manhole ninety feet from the back of sidewalk. The might didn't know it was there. Nobody knows there. I paid two hundred dollars for a guy with a camera to find that. And two different drops with the camera. And we figured it out was in a manhole because it had a ring up above. We could see it in the light at night. And I went to Mike with this one. He seen, I showed him on my phone, I filmed it. And as soon as he seen that ring, he was, oh, I seen enough. Next morning, by the time I got over there at nine o'clock, he had a crew out there that already cut the manhole lid up, pumped it, and the guy's sitting on a bucket saying, I said, what are you waiting for? And he goes, oh, waiting for it to get back with the new lid for this manhole. I said, I told you guys there's a manhole here. You, Mike, and Darren. Everybody said no. So my point is I'm really responsible because you got elected in January twenty twelve, right? And it was February, January, I think it was around March or something, when the councils all going through this changing. Every time you thought you got things straightened out, another one resigned to force a special election. Okay, so time's up, huh? There's at least twenty and thirty. There's at least thirty foot of that line on S Street that the city is responsible for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brett Delmas?
Thank you. Thank you, folks. My name is Brett Delmas. I appreciate Diego's information. I appreciate your experience, sir. I've been a resident here since twenty fifteen. And I just wanted to say, you know, I I feel this is a bad deal. This is one of those things, you know, I I've been in sales. I know sales, that was a hell of a sales pitch, sir. But I think it's a bad deal. You had a bar graph for the first year, but you didn't want to show the second year. And you certainly didn't take us up to the fifth year where we'd be almost double the highest price in the next town over. You know, I feel that if we had planned for this accordingly, we would have money from the developments that we've made. You you even said three years ago, we should have been making this plan. And we knew that the infrastructure was old three years ago. And now we've got crossroads. We got Target and that shopping center over there. We got a brand new set of houses over where the farm used to be. And I know we got another shopping center coming there, you know? So there's four different avenues right there where we could have had a couple of dollars in the pocket for this. But instead, we're passing it on to the people, you know? And we're a poor community. We don't have anything. We're fixed incomes. We are minimum wage workers. We are small business owners, and we are families. Okay? And in that situation, you're not talking about five dollars a day. You're talking about six hundred dollars a year. And when that money comes to my grandparents' house, because they're on a fixed income, they can't go and ask them for six hundred additional dollars a year. They've got to break that into the budget that they've already got. And I know that that's different for other families that are having even a harder time. So the fact of the matter is, this is a proposed bill to push out the lowest income residents in Riverbank. And that's all it is. Because at the end of the day, those people are not going to be able to come up with the money, and they can't do anything else but leave. And so in this situation, I feel that if you guys are a representation of us and you need to be and you need to be brokering a good deal for us, then I think that that should be taken into a much more heavy consideration than I feel it has been. And sir, you told me that story when I was standing back here last time I was here. And you, you were even a little bit more candid. And you said if people would stop wasting the one or two, $3 a day that they're wasting, then they could come up with this bill. And what I'm telling you is when I go out and speak to the people, they're not saying that they're going to be able to save that money because they're already saving it. Inflation is high. Gas is high. Groceries are high. We're having a really hard time out here right now. And I don't think that the way that this is being done is correct for the people that you're representing. Thank you.
Mr. Jerem Van Holton.
Thank you, Councilman Mr. Mayor. I think this whole thing stinks. But main thing, I don't think the city of Riverbank has a chance of getting 50% votes against this because people just don't vote. And the way you make your the way this is, is very confusing. They want you to sign here and then you got to open it up here and then sign it there. And then you have to bring it in. I don't know if you're going to get 50% of the people to down here to deliver it or actually get an envelope that'll accompany you this to where you're going to get that 50% votes or more. And so that's number one. I have a real big issue with the city of Riverbank as far as how this was presented and put out. It's very confusing. The other issue I have, I'm a financial advisor and I think it all boils down to fiscal responsibility. Just like many mentioned already, you know, we knew about this since 1996. And when you came into office, this is something we already did an increase for five years for the sewage system. So it's something that we already knew about and it should have been addressed way back then. We're at an all time high as far as as far as inflation over 40. It hasn't been this high since 40 years. And people are struggling in this city to, you know, just pay the bills. And it's fiscal responsibility and it's planning ahead. But if you plan ahead five years and then you're going to do it again, I think it's the big carrot, the grants, which by the way, is our tax money too from the federal side usually. So our taxes are going higher, you know, in other areas. But to have it here and hit us right here in the city in our pocketbook for low income or whatever income you are, you are, the inflation is just not the right. It's not the right thing to do to tax us. When after COVID, many businesses went out of business, people, many people lost their jobs. And it's just a real challenge for a lot of people. The fiscal responsibility you got to consider is, you know, this carrot they're talking about. It may or may not come through. We have had growth with a lot of business, but now I understand that you can't pay for this from tax money. But maybe there could be a change to the laws to where maybe we can. Because we're getting a lot more tax money from all the businesses, crossroads, crossroads too, all the new home development and also the the marijuana dispensaries and whatnot. So Riverbank's been getting a lot of money in taxes. We need to change the rules, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Ms. Karen Clonrode.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I, I have just a question or a comment to make. I would like to know how much of the rate payers cost is related to the treatment improvement? And how much is related to the expansion for future development to have that broken down? And then I'll be back later to talk about Riverwalk. Okay. Thank you.
Mary Ann Benman.
Hello, Council Chambers. I'm happy to be here. I'm not a public speaker, but I did want to give my share, my input into this. And I'm a retired nurse, 20 years over at Oak Valley Hospital. And I can tell you with the income that I have in my retirement, I, I will not be able to sustain where I live. And I have lived in my home in Riverbank for 13 years. And I will not be able to accommodate these rate increases going forward. A doubling of sewer and water rates in five years is just, it's unreasonable for retirees and for lower income people. And after all, there are a number of low income people living in Riverbank. So it doesn't seem appropriate that this, these types, this type of proposal would be made to cause us to have extra burdens and endure, you know, extra financial suffering when we are suffering already, as you know, because of inflation. So I just wanted to give you that input and I'm really hoping, I'm praying that, you know, the, the provider, the all knowing higher power is going to intervene in this situation so that people like myself, who are good citizens, who are willing taxpaying citizens, you know, bill paying citizens, won't have to leave this community because of this type of increase. Thank you.
Maria Ramirez. Mr. Gustavo Rodriguez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maria Ramirez. I'm a resident here of Riverbank. I've been here since 2017. Prior to that, I lived in Santa Clara County. I was a child protective service worker, a social worker with emergency response. I moved over here since 2017. I've been very happy living here in Riverbank. It's a great community. I'm here tonight like everyone else because I'm appalled by these proposed water rate increases. First of all, the notices that were sent out, they weren't like these. It was during, you know, when the elections were coming up, it was this shiny big form that most people I talked to neighbors, they thought it was junk mail, so they just threw it away. They didn't even know. And so just like someone else mentioned, you know, it's confusing enough. But when it came in this big shiny paper, you just looked at it and you thought, oh, this is just junk mail. So I don't think realistically, you're going to get more than 50% of the people, even though I'm sure more than 50% of the people, residents living here are opposed to these increases. Because realistically, like everyone else says, inflation, you know, we have COVID. We have gas increases, our PG&E bills. I was forced to retire. I got injured on the job and I moved over here. I am living on a fixed income. I'm not going to be able to afford this as well. And you know, I have my pension and everything. I do fairly well. But with increases with everything else, food, you know, PG&E, gas, everything. I don't know how be able to sustain this. And then, you know, we talk about projections of all, you know, people moving over here. Well, this increases, I think more people are going to be leaving. More people are already leaving California in general. But again, how can people afford this? This is just ridiculous. And, and grants, you know, this is okay, supposed grants that we don't even know are going to happen. So I'm looking at pretty much by 2027, our rates are going to be increased. And that's just absurd and it's disgusting. And I don't really think that that is representing the people of Riverbank. If this is being proposed and this is just going to go through and people aren't even really given the chance to protest it because they didn't even know about it. Or, you know, they're not sophisticated enough to be able to come here or they didn't speak the language or what have you. And so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Gustavo Rodriguez.
Okay, I'm not a speaker, but I'm in disagree with the wastewater increase. I feel like it's not right for me. I cannot understand people that went to Mexico for vacation is the one is going to decide that we're going to get the increase. It's something there. I don't, I don't feel. I feel like cheat with the, the way it is this far. So so I'm very confused. I was confused at the beginning. I asked people, don't understand. We get the pay every other month. You guys make it every month, so. I asked a lot of people until they, they told me how to do it, so. I'm increased. I feel cheat with the, the way it is this one. Thank you. Can I give my time to Diego Hernandez? Thank you.
No.
There's no city ordinance standing that you guys can run a time.
We're limiting time, three per person. Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Chelsea Garcia, she's on Zoom. Yeah, I clicked on her too. Ms. Garcia, if you can hear me on Zoom, I'm asking you to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead and give your comment.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I absolutely appreciated the previous speakers giving us a little bit of background of our history. As a new resident in this area, I am absolutely concerned from what I'm hearing and the lack of adequate financial practices in this city. By next year, so will be about double the average of what the average sewer bill in California is and on the higher median side, right, compared to our neighboring cities. So as a new resident, right, and not only current but upcoming 5,000 plus homes that were verbalized earlier, we're being taxed about $700 a month for Melrose and additional taxes. So I guess my question is, doesn't the Melrose cover infrastructure improvements? And if so, how much are we taking out of our current development to cover this?
Ms. Garcia, are you done with your comment?
I am. I would like a response. Thank you so much.
So we let you speak on your comment? Are you, are you done with your comment, Ms. Garcia?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple more on Zoom.
Hello?
Hi, can you please state your name and give your comment?
Yeah, my name is Kristen Herosi. I've been living here since 2018. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so the guy with the slide, that other gentleman was Bravo that he called out the guy for only showing the first year slide. Yeah. The fact that we're going to be paying $70 more after five years, so we're paying all this money for five years. Then the rates go back down or we're basically going to be paying in five years $109 for this wastewater. And apparently y'all are trying to sell that the money that we're going to be paying over five years is to build this infrastructure. So then how is it that we'll have to continue to pay $109 for the service of our wastewater? Because I'm not understanding. I didn't see anything that told me that we're going to get back to a lower rate. So if we, you know, pay into it, it's going to build it great. And then in five years, do we get it back? Other thing, the, yes, also the, the notice looked like your leaflet, that is the newsletter. And it was terrible. I actually spoke to a Realtor friend of mine who lives in Riverbank. And she threw it away. She didn't even know that it was something that was going to tell us that we were going to have to pay more money. Y'all should have put it into an envelope, made it look like it was from City of Riverbank and make it look official. It just looked like a notice that we're having a party in Riverbank, honestly. I did make a couple of copies and I did post on Nextdoor, but I only got two people saying that they, you know, read it or whatever. What else? Oh, also the guy that said the, the presentation, oh yeah, well, if we get the grants, the problem is we have to accept to pay the higher rate before we can find out if we get the grants. Which, you know, okay, oh, oh, please give us the grants, you know? I, I don't know. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be retiring in about 10 years. I want to continue to live in my house. I'm looking forward to how much money I'm going to have in order to retire. And having to pay this much more, I'm afraid I'm going to have to move. So currently I'm not on a fixed income or like the other people that have spoken that they're on a fixed income and they, you know, aren't going to be able to afford it. I'm already looking forward to thinking I'm not going to be able to afford it. So please rethink this. Find somebody else to get a bid from. I don't know. I don't know. And you know, is this his cookie cutter five year plan? Because he said he proposed that for some other building, whatever. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a couple more.
Hello?
Hi, Kristen.
Hello?
Hi. Can you please state your name and give your comment?
I'm not Kristen. Are you talking to me?
Oh, hi, Ms. Halbert.
Yeah.
Yes, you're, you're, you can speak.
My name is Evelyn Halbert. Prop 218 very clearly states under section six, part four, that no fear charge may be imposed on a service unless that service is actually used by or immediately available to the owner of the property. That waste recycling plant on the other side of the river is not available to anybody on this side of the river. It also says that fees are charged based on potential or future use of a service or not. As far as being equitable, you're not, as of right now, future growth is not paying anything. Whoever uses that water over there is not paying anything. Industrial is not included in this rate increase. You've got one that coming in here that's going to have a huge amount of waste going over there. You've got another one that owes the city almost $5,500,000 and the city is not doing anything to collect the total amount that they're owed, but they don't have a problem raising our rates. There's an item in a thing called a financial security package, which would answer a lot of the questions that we're asking. However, that is not available to the public until afterwards, when filed this afternoon. One of the things that has, as this thing you're doing right now is for phase one, which is the first year. You're not saying anything about phase two, phase three, and however many other phases are after that. And each time you go to the next phase, you're going to come back with another prop 218 to raise our rates again to pay for that phase. In a draft, I'm using the draft rate study because I haven't seen a final one out. There's something called rate funded capital. It's on page 15 under expenses. I'd like to know what that is, why it is that in one year it goes from 313,000 clear up to over 6 million. The last thing I want to ask about is the CIP. The CIP in this draft rate study now shows all the projects for down here for us that you can do. And it's almost $10 million. Where is that money supposed to come from? And secondly, if you look at the CIP, and this is for the council especially, look at that CIP that's in the draft rate study now. Then you go back 2015 when it came out. When we raised the race the last time, the June 18, 2015 rate study, sewer rate study. It's the exact same CIP, the exact same project. The only difference is what costs 70,000 now costs 90,000. costs 90,000, 75,000 then, costs 90,000 now. So you tell me, did you not complete any of those projects in the last five years that we've contained, that we paid our rate increases for? And now you're putting it on again? Or did you complete them and you just want to use the money for something else? Or what's going on? And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Halbert. Your time's up. Hi, can you hear us? Can you please state your name and give your comment? Hello, can you hear us? If you can hear us, I'm going to have to mute you because we, we cannot hear you. We do.
Hello?
Hi, Ms. Eggers, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and give your comment.
My name is Jamie Eggers. I have a couple of comments. First question is, can you tell us how many written protests the city received?
Ms. Eggers, we, we hear your comment first. It's not a back and forth. We don't respond to the questions till the end of the comments. Okay.
And my second comment is, it seems to me that this is a twofold project. One aspect is the recycled water portion. And my suggestion is that the city needs to separate that portion of the project out from the wastewater treatment expansion, which is for new growth. And the recycled water portion of your project is admirable. It's something the state is pushing cities and areas to do. And that's what you need the grant funds for. So go for that and discontinue the portion of the project, which is expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, which is directed at new growth. Thank you.
Every time she does that, she mutes me. Hi, can you hear us? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state your name and give your comment?
Hi, my name is Virginia Meduanyo. I'm actually calling to make a couple of comments. And first and foremost, good evening to all of you. And I want to applaud those that have spoken. I think that the comments that have been made to this point are very well articulated. I was actually at church at St. Francis of Rome on Sunday. And I took my mom, who is 86 years old, to the Spanish mass. And I can't tell you how many people were talking about this rate increase. Father Avila posted it in the bulletin. Unfortunately, most of the community, Spanish speaking community, including my parents, they don't know how to access Zoom. So I'm taking the initiative to number one, make a comment of your outreach. I believe that your outreach was less than adequate for the community that you are here to represent. Over 50% of our community are Spanish speaking. What have you done to ensure that you made adequate, equitable, and fair outreach attempts? A glossy flyer does not make the case. What have you done to go out into the community and actually have this conversation? And it's not just for the Spanish speaking. I'm talking about everybody in the City of Riverbank. That they understand what it is that you were proposing and how it's going to affect every single resident. These rate increases are unsustainable and inequitable. New development should be paying for itself. And again, I just want to say, I am here speaking not only for my family, but so many that I heard in church on Sunday saying, how are we going to be able to pay for this? You need to go back to the drawing table and need to do two things. One, again, attempt, do better attempts of doing better outreach to your community. And two, look at how this is going to affect so many of us in the City of Riverbank. Thank you.
We have one more public comment on Zoom. Hi, can you hear us? Hi, can you hear us?
We have two more public comment here.
That's the last one.
That's the last one. Okay, just move on.
Hi, can you hear us? They're not in meeting. To the resident on Zoom with the phone number that ends in 659. If you could please unmute yourself using the prompt that's provided to you. Yeah, no more. There are no more comments, Mayor, on Zoom.
Go ahead with the next.
That's off for, yeah.
All right, this time I closed the public hearing. And then we are looking at the total numbers of protests that we have received. Before we do that, do we want to comment on some of the questions that were asked? For example, new development is paying, we're going to be paying a lot more. Not only do they do the, the waste that everyone will be paying, but also new rate. But not one single residence, not even myself, not, none of you have paid for the wastewater treatment plant, other than through your rates. No one has. We failed from 1923, 1922 to collect anything for the sewer. It's been given to us through, through grants and through increases in the seventies. It's 1930 technologies and, and 1930 technologies are great, but the state is looking at closing it down. So we're trying to be proactive. Unfortunately, we are now between how, how do we move forward in keeping the sewer going without having the state come on up and says, Riverbank, close it down and rebuild it. So we're trying to be proactive. So we do not get shut down and then everything is paid for out of our own pockets. Right now, money is available. And that's why we have to move, that's why we have to move now. If everyone paid a rate, it would be a couple thousand dollars and it would pay for the, the, the wastewater treatment fund, but that's not going to happen. We have to now do it through, through the, the rate increases that everyone will be paying on a monthly basis. While we are moving forward, I am confident that we will be getting grants. As we get the grants, the maximum amount you'll be paying is lessened. How far is that lessened is depending on the availability and how well we go and, and achieve the grants. The, the grants that we're asking for right now is about 50 million. But the caller, Ms. Eggers, was correct. The recycled water is agriculture one, which is separate that we have to apply for. And that's $28 million of the total bill. Will agriculture pay for it? If not, what do we do with that recycled water? We could make a case where that additional $28 million, but it's not there yet. So we, as city council and city staff, has to go out there and get the grant funding for the wastewater treatment plant. And get the grant funding for the recycled water and then have a consumer. We have consumers for it. They will be willing to pay us, but we can't put that into any study until we can deliver the water to them. And then they can pay us money back. Will that take care of? No. Will, will the new development that is not yet not planned out yet be paying, they will be paying. It's not the Melrose or the CFD that was talked by one of the individuals. But we have an obligation to ensure that we keep the sewer going. Have you been out there? It's a pond system. 30 technologies increased in, in technologies by the, the lift fans, improvements to the headwaters, the sewer that comes on in, in the nineties. And not really upgraded since then, other than what we can do to maintain the system. It's old. The state is looking very closely and some of them are being very restrictive in what they can and cannot do. There's a city in Escalon that has some issues that they may have state controlling it. It's unfortunate that, that the technology is, has almost doubled since we first started this study about five years ago. And then three years ago, it went from 68 million to 128 million. As, as we move forward, the cost, if we do it in phasing, may scale back significantly enough. But I don't, I won't bet on that. But I will bet that the, the grant funding is there. There are individuals who are behind in their payments and we are collecting from them. They're not going to be set aside a $500,000 bill because they had a tenant that didn't pay. They are, they're responsible for it. As for the notice, the notice was vetted as being appropriate. We did outreach and there's no outreach that I've been involved with that is 100% equitable. I could say that. But we did what is the accepted means and that we did it with due diligence and we did it with the proper intent. So at this time, I'd like to have the, is there any other comments from the council before I ask for total? Okay, can we have the total of the protests, please?
At the close of the public hearing, there are 960 number of protests. The amount of protest needed was 3,419 to meet the 50 plus one requirement.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a resolution accepting and closing the Prop 218 public notification and protest process as it relates to the proposed rate increases for the wastewater sewer services.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to, to accept the resolution and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Deba?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And adopt the resolution approving, approving the proposed wastewater sewer rates contingent upon the results and we have that, right?
So I'll make a motion for item two as well.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to accept the resolution and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Deba?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I know it's painful for you, but it's painful for us as residents and also being up here to make the decisions.
It was a unanimous vote to approve. 900, 960 protests.
16.
60. 960. To protest, yes. We don't, we don't take no. Those are the no's. Yes. Public comment has closed.
Thank you very much for your comment, Mr. Moore. I'll talk to you afterwards if you so desire. Okay, thank you. Item 10-1, recognition of Vice Mayor, Councilmember Cal Campbell.
Vice Mayor Campbell, if you'd like to join the mayor down.
We do have a recess scheduled for after the special business.
Yeah, please, I'm not going up there. Cal, we're going to go to the podium.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Cal Campbell has been with the, the city since June of 2013 as a council member. And through today, what is that, nine years? Nine, nine and a half, count the days. Well, he's leaving right now the politics. He decided that politics is too important to lead for politicians. So he's leaving us and he's going to go on to bigger, better things like pickleball, pool, pool cleaning and grandchildren baby sitting. So Cal, it's been my honor to serve with you, your tenure on the council. And you have really displayed true leadership. One of the things I am going to miss is, Mayor, I agree with you. Not everyone agrees with me, but Cal did that a lot. I heard that. So it's great appreciation that the whole city has for you, Cal, as Vice Mayor and for council member, for your superb leadership and navigating through seemingly impossible difficulties, providing inspirational guidance and finding common ground that developing transformative projects that will be realized in the future generations. Always concerned and proactive, you've left a positive impact on the staff and the community. It is a great honor. It is a great honor having him lead and guide the city of Riverbank. Cal, we are grateful. Thank you very much. Thank you on that one. And we also have some type of a shadow box with my picture, oh, your picture in it. But anyway, this is also just some memorabilia of you being here. And Cal, again, thank you. And your lovely wife for, I know she had to put up with us as much as you had to put up with us.
So Mayor, I would like to invite Supervisor Buck Condit, who also has something to present to Vice Mayor Campbell.
Cal, thank you for your service and dedication and sacrifice. So on behalf of the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, we wanted to recognize you here tonight for everything that you have done for the city of Riverbank and the citizens here. Thank you. And although that you may be leaving here for a little bit, I'm gonna give you a little bit of a break because I have some vacancies on some citizen advisory committees that I need to.
Thanks, Buck, I appreciate it. First of all, my family and my friends aren't here tonight. I asked them not to come because I thought there might be a lot of people here. And I couldn't have done what I did without the family and the friends that I've had. My wife's put up with a whole lot of things, my sons and whatnot. And I really appreciate that service that I got because of my family and my friends. When I decided to run for election several years ago, I was just, made my decision off, just off the top of my head. The one thing that I did it for was I was tired of being, growing up in this area and having Riverbank always be, get that publicity from the papers and whatnot. So I decided I wanted to run for office to help try to make a better council. And quite honestly, I have achieved my goal. And it's not just me. I have a great number of people on this council that have been very, very good. We have differences, but we work them out. We don't cuss out each other. We don't get in fistfights. And we, because of that, this city's reputation has gone up. And we are now one of the better councils in Stanislaus County, when once upon a time, we were one of the worst. So that was what my goal is, and I'm very proud of that. But along the way, I did a lot of other things that helped me because I helped the citizens a lot with different things. And I really enjoyed that. I'm going to be going, you know, off of the council, but I will still be a resident of Riverbank. And I've got a good person that's gonna be taking over for me. She's got experience. And I'll be on her back if she doesn't do the right thing, along with Buck. And I think she's gonna do a very good job. After that, you know, I have nothing else to say. But this is a great community. And we can't always do exactly what the public wants us to do because we have to face powers up above to get it done. And if we don't, it's even gonna be worse sometimes if we have to wait longer. So thank you very much for, say, having my time up here. I appreciate it very much.
And Mayor, we do have a few members of the council which want to provide some comments to Vice Mayor as well.
I'll just briefly say it's, I'm actually getting, I knew I was gonna get emotional. I didn't know at what point I was gonna get emotional. And it just happened to be during your presentation. I'm gonna miss you. I'm losing a political friend up here. But I'm gaining you as a friend in my personal life. You've been inviting to me and my family, so I'll miss you. Thanks.
And as a newer council member, I just want to say thank you for showing me you could still have a good spirit, you know, after all the years of serving and everything that you've done for council and for myself.
Thank you.
Cal, I will never forget the night that we drove from here all the way to Turlock with no lights on, okay? Anyway, but.
Well, Councilmember Martinez, I'll never forget the time that we went down to the League of City Council meeting in Southern California, and you took us to the wrong motel room and knocked on the door.
Yep, wrong floor, but same room number, anyway. But enjoy your retirement, Cal. You will be missed. But we'll see you around in the community, okay? Thank you.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Campbell, on behalf of city staff, we do have some flowers that we would like you to present on our behalf to Marina. We thank her very much, although she could not be here today. We thank her very much for letting her, you know, borrow you for quite some time. We thank you for your guidance and your leadership, for your friendship. And we will always have chocolates available for you whenever you come into City Hall.
Once again, thank you very much. Also to the audience.
Right now, it is my distinct pleasure to administer the oath of office, presentation of certificates of election to Councilmember District One Luis Gribay and Councilmember District Three Leanne Jones Cruz. If you will, please come up. Individual, okay, one at a time? Okay, I can do that. Okay. So you're up here, but I'm gonna do it one at a time. You're gonna come over here? You can stand. You can witness. Please, thank you again for being a public servant. And if you will, please raise your right hand. I, Luis Gribay.
I, Luis Gribay.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of California.
And the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this oath freely
That I take this oath freely.
Without obligation
Without obligation.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well
And that I will well.
And faithfully
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of what I'm about to enter.
Of, but I'm about to enter.
Okay, and I congratulate you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, now you have to say something, even though you were unopposed. You now have to give your platform.
It's on.
Okay. Okay, so where do I begin? So like the last four years went by so quickly. I've just been truly honored to work for this city. It is becoming like my third family, like some of the other people have said. I've made a lot of friends, a lot of support from within my district, within the city, within the county, and beyond. And I truly am just grateful for everything. So I'm gonna briefly thank everybody that voted for me, supported for me, you know, supported me in any possible way. I have friends here that I will have forever going forward. I have people that have supported me, you know, not visibly. My wife is here. When she was here four years ago, the little one was actually inside her, right? So she was pregnant, nobody knew. So it's nice to see that she's here with a city person. And I just wanna thank my mom, who, one of my biggest supporters as well. Love you, couldn't ask for a better mom. And thank you. I'm looking forward to this new council. Hopefully, running unopposed just means that I gain the trust of the community. And I'm gonna continue to work as best and as hard as I can as a, so thank you, everybody.
Okay, now I know that I have to talk more. All right, yeah? Oh, you want a picture? Congratulations. All right. I'm gonna go slow. I'm gonna go slow. I've given thousands of these, and it's so easy. So please, raise your right hand. I'm Leanne Jones Cruz.
I'm Leanne Jones Cruz.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Oh, you want that out of the way so we can hear your shot? That's the call of Janet. All right. So we're gonna do the signing, and then you can have it going up. But while she's signing, you want to say anything?
I just want to thank my friends and family for supporting me. Some of you may not know that I was a former council member and vice mayor. And then I took a small break when we went to districting. And I remember stepping down and being up here a few chairs, saying, "It's not the last I've done, and I will be back." Guess what? I'm back. I look forward to this term. I look forward to working for my constituents in District Three and being part of this council. So thank you, the part of working with all of you.
Well, thank you. And congratulations. Okay, at this time, I would like to have Jen Donner, it's Heidi. Oh, there you are. I knew. And then I have Isnee here.
Yes.
And Michael. Okay. Everybody, congratulations, all right. I will use one. Okay, so you all are gonna line up this way and face the public. I like it both times.
Thank you.
Okay, the planning commission is, other than the city council, probably the most important commission or board that affects the city as it grows, as it determines whether it's a filter, whether it's a conditional use permit to major subdivisions. And you all have done magnificent jobs. And I expect more out of the others that are now coming on board. So I'm going to start the oath of office, and I'll be as slow as I was on the last one. And if you will, state your name when I, after I say, "I..."
I.
Okay. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge the duties
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I get to sign, but you get to sign too.
They can all sign, and you can sign.
We have to line up in order here. Yes. Gabby, you sign that?
No, I don't know.
I have one of these there in the treasure.
Yep, I'm down here.
Okay, sorry.
Come on.
Too many of you.
Now, you get to go over here, Gabby, and you can start signing. Someone did take pictures, so. And if I may have, you all line up again.
Yes.
And so we can have pictures of your certificate. Yes?
No. Effective January. Their term becomes effective January twenty-two.
Stephen, I will.
Yes, you too. Yes, your old terms.
All right, please line up again so we can take pictures. Who's the, you're the photographer? All right.
Mike's coming out of the sleeve already. I think it's Mike's sleeve, look at that, what a great start I've made. Try to fix him and make him work.
All right. Again, gentlemen, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we're going to recess for a short period of time. And we're going to reorganize the council.
At this time, I'd like to have a new City Council roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribé.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor O'Brien.
Sure. Conflict of interest, any council authority member or staff has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled item to be considered is declared a conflict at this time. Saying none, at this time, the members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments cannot be, not exceed three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. Do I have public comment?
Mayor, we have Ms. Karen Conrato.
Hi, my name is Karen Conrato. I live on Ho Road in Modesto. I'm here to let you know that I oppose the Riverwalk proposed project. The important points I've listed before are still valid. These reasons include almost 1,000 acres of prime agricultural land that would be destroyed, that is a prime water recharge area, that again would be just, you know, the potential is high to be completely destroyed. That is a repairing habitat, so that would affect wildlife and plant life. That once this highly productive food-giving land is paved over, it's gone forever. Another point that I would like to make tonight, oh, and another before I move to that point. And also that there's land of lesser quality soils already available, both here in Riverbank and in San Sos County. Another point is the possibility of a recession is looming and could occur early in the coming year. And that is just reason to consider fully the implications of our, a recession on our economy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Libby Longstrip? At this time, there's no more wishing to speak.
We should have made, redone the master, the master plan for the sewer. And we don't even have a service life assessment for the plant that we have now. I can show it to you, it's from 2007, and it shows the trunk line that's leading into the development. And it seems funny that the timing for capacity growth and capacity needs for the sewer treatment facility extends to the development that is now in question, the Riverwalk that he's talking about. So, when we talk about capacity and the need for growth, what's gonna happen when we get into the recession, which we're, we're already headed to it, we're gonna be in a long-term environment of interest rates, where interest rates are gonna be higher than probably five and a half to six percent. What's gonna happen when the development doesn't get developed? I mean, you guys have Crossroads West. The city's vision plan from 2005 to 2025 still shows the same projections for Crossroads West. It's still the same thing, nothing's changed, there's not even any vision plan, there's no master sewer plan that's been updated. And then you, you, look what you did as a resident, you had 1,000 people fill those out. I personally walked, and I spoke to everyone, 100% of the people that I spoke to, they told me that they opposed this. 100% of them did not agree with this. And of the, of the people that I spoke to, the vast majority didn't even have the notices in their hands. So, you guys really need to reconsider what you guys have already done, and what you guys are gonna continue to do. You guys are gonna basically be using ratepayers to pay for growth for one developer, Berghill LLC, for the Riverwalk. I mean, come on. What's gonna be left for the rest of us? And the city governance models all fail over time. You need, you need new growth to start to pay for them. But then now we go down this path where we're gonna be indebted ourselves for almost $100 million, trying to get a $15 million grant, so we add the recycled water component to it, so we can become eligible. It's ridiculous. I mean, you're up, you're in District 4, you're in my district, I may consider running against you just to get you out. People are, people are upset about this, and we're gonna continue to be upset about this, and every one of you guys voted for it. Leanne, I asked you, you didn't tell me, but you said, "I just got started, I don't really know enough about the subject," but I would like to hear what your, your position on, on the, on the water treatment facility is, you know? Obviously, you can't say anything, nor will you say anything. But, man, you guys really screwed the pooch on this one. I, I talked to Tom Pabatrick, he's from. I, I talked to Tom Pabatrick, he's from Municipal Financial Services, he does what Bartle Wells and Associates does, and he told me basically it's malfeasance and incompetence from the city councils before you guys on the city failing to plan for this. And you guys know, I, I don't have to remind you guys, but the plan has already been there since 2004, 2005. I can do the layovers of the Riverwalk with the trunk line that crosses the San Osaslas River. Now that we have a developer, now that the sphere of influence has increased, now it's timely to grow the capacity for the wastewater treatment facility?
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Thank you. Go on to the consent calendar consisting of 14.1, a resolution to allocate funds for the Squar Wells Roundabout. Item 14.2, a resolution approving the appropriation of funds and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract to conduct a cleanup of 3412 High Street. Item 14.3, a resolution authorizing expenditures for, from the Jacob Myers Park Fund. Item 14.4, a resolution establishing a capital financing and debt policy. Item 14.5, authorizing the out-of-state travels request to have Senior Construction Inspector attend 2023 Slurry Systems Workshop in Las Vegas. Item 14.6, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his or her designee to act as the authorized representative to sign and file for and on behalf of the City of Riverbank. A financial assistance application for the financing agreement from the State Water Resources Control Board for the planning, design, and construction of the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project. Item 14.7, a reimbursement resolution declaring the city's intent to expect reimbursements on expenditures paid prior to the issuance of obligations or the approval by the State Water Board for projects funded. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on any of the consent items?
I'd like to pull item 14.1 just for a brief discussion.
Okay. Any others? Do I have consideration for 14-2 through 14-7?
I'll make a motion to approve item 14.2 through 14.7.
A second.
Motion to approve item 14.2 through 14.7, roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion pass 5-0.
On item 14.1, do you have comments?
Yes, I do. It's about the, the structure that we have at the roundabout. And I just want to make sure that our residents know that that street is very heavily, always, you know, full of traffic. And I'm glad to see that we're trying to get it fixed. But I'd like to just make sure everyone is aware that in September of 2021, we had it fixed because of an accident. And then a few weeks later, after it was fixed, there was another accident. And so to try to mitigate the accidents in that, that roundabout, we've installed flashing lights, we put bumper pebbles, you know, like on the street. But it's still, people are not actually, like, there's a yield sign there, but they're not actually yielding when they come through there. It seems like those that are traveling south, coming from the north and traveling south, they just speed up and go through real fast, and I'm afraid it's going to be another accident. And we're going to be back in the same place again. So I'm just asking residents to slow down if you're, and if you are traveling from the west trying to go east, they don't even slow down for you. You have to, like, you know, just sit there and wait for traffic to pass you, even though you may be the first one to be at the roundabout, and it says yield, and you should be able to go through. I'm just asking residents to be more careful, be more considerate as you go through that roundabout, so we don't have any more accidents, and we don't have to spend taxpayers' money trying to get it fixed again. So thank you. And I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
And I'll second it.
Well, a motion to approve and a second on item 14.1, roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Public hearing 15-1. Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project. Council consideration of resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project, and then approving the project.
Mayor and City Council members, tonight we have Neil Colwell, who will be presenting this item. This is yet another component of the required documents that need to be prepared for the future consideration of the project itself and for the submittal of certain grant documents.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Neil Colwell, Kelson Sinick New Deck Districts, or the city's utility engineer. Pleased to be presenting to you this evening the environmental document for the regional, Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project. I want to go through just a brief summary of presentation tonight. I'm going to do a bit of a recap of the project, the project scope, what's entailed in the project, and what has gone into the, the Sequa project description. To be back up, before I do that, I do need to also announce to have on the line is Andrea Shepherd with Ascent Environmental. She's a project manager for the consultant team that prepared the environmental document. So she'll be available for questions when, when I'm done as well. Again, I want to provide a brief summary of the, of the project. Go through the requirements under SEQA and, and what's resulted in the, the, the development of the, the report that you have in front of you in the process for its, its public presentation review. Summarize the, the initial study findings. Go through the environmental review process and the outcomes or results of that. And then ultimately present the initial study and the mitigated negative, negative declaration for the council's consideration. So going through a project summary, the, and this is this information from our presentation to the council in, in September. What the, the environmental document is based on is, is the entire project as it's, it's been defined following the, the two planning studies that were produced and the, the results of the draft preliminary design work that's ongoing right now. And so it relates to the full project for developing both what we call secondary capacity as well as a tertiary recycled water capacity up to 2.29 million gallons per day. Right now, the city's influence flow is about 1.6 million gallons per day. So this project here is, is covering capacity for both existing users and, and, and the new users, future users has, has been described previously. A couple of elements of the, the project that, that provide benefit to the city is, is by incorporating the recycled use component. It's giving alternatives for the city to, to have a variety of means for affluent disposal, and ultimately a beneficial use of that, that effluent. So in lieu of just using percolation ponds, which would have to be expanded to accommodate a, a flow above about 1.8 million gallons per day, we're, we've, we have a plan to integrate agricultural water use, or agricultural use of the recycled water, which provides, again, the city the ability to have multiple ways to, to dispose of the wastewater, but also get beneficial use out of that. The, the treatment improvements cover really two primary components. One is what we call the secondary treatment process. And so that's, that's the, the process that is really necessary for the water to be discharged, to continue, continue to be discharged to the percolation ponds. It also treats the water to a certain level that allows for it to be filtered and disinfected then for recycled use. So that project includes, again, capacity to serve existing users, but also an expansion of capacities to serve, to serve future users. It integrates nitrogen removal, which is an important component of the project that allows the continued discharge of water to percolation ponds. And that's a requirement of the state under what's called the basin plan. Basin Plan is a Regional Water Quality Control Board policy document, really essentially regulation that the city has to comply with. So this project here includes nitrogen removal as part of it to be able to achieve that ongoing compliance. So you're looking at some of the, the future benefits of the project. It's by having the multiple means to, to reuse the, the affluent, both in percolation ponds and, and in irrigation use, it's providing you with additional benefits into the future. Again, the flexibility of those two, two components. The combination of using percolation ponds and delivering recycled water to growers in lieu of them pumping groundwater is going to have a, a benefit to both the San Joaquin, eastern San Joaquin and the Modesto sub-basin groundwater basins, which the city uses as, as its primary source for potable water. So it's going to have regional benefits to the city in that, that means as well. Likewise, by having recycled use component to the project, you have an ability to charge for the recycled water, and that'll defray some of the ongoing operation costs of, of, of the project moving forward. Will cover all the costs, but this, its ability to have a revenue source that will defray some of those costs. And then essentially, by taking a, the, the old, as the mayor said, 1920s type of system to a modern system, including the recycled use components, providing you greater opportunities for, for future beneficial use of recycled water into the future. Some of those things are still developing as, as drought conditions continue to evolve in California. But it really positions the city to have a good opportunity to do different things with, with that, that, that resource now as it's treated to a higher level. So going through a little bit of the history, and I think this is a bit of a recap of, of some of the history of this, how this project's developed. Initially, the concepts were brought forward in 2015 of integrating recycled use component into the city's wastewater portfolio. That started with a reconnaissance study to look at what the options might be, what, what would be the lay of the land, if you will, of being able to have a recycled water component to, to the city system. In, in, in 2016, 2017, those studies were, were advanced, again, at a reconnaissance level, and showed that there's a good opportunity to be able to upgrade the city's system to be able to integrate recycled water. During that same time, we were starting to see some of the need for the capacity enhancements that were, were coming into play at that same time. And as a result of that, in 2017, the, the council authorized making an application to the State Water Board for grant funding to, to take that reconnaissance study and do a feasibility study. You were successful in getting the 50% coverage grant funding for that study in 2017. That work moved forward into 2020 and 2021, where the, the feasibility studies were, were developed, presented to council, a lot of input from the council in terms of, of the approach to, to the project, ultimately resulting in, in the council authorizing a submittal of an application to the State Water Board for ongoing financing of the project. And with that was contracting for some of the steps that are necessary to complete the documents to, to, to prepare those, those applications. One of those contracts included the rate study that Bartle Wells reported on earlier tonight. And the other was development of the environmental document that you're, you're considering here tonight as well. So with respect to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, the, the city as a lead agency, this would be your project, and so there's a discretionary action that the city would have, that you have at this point in terms of approval of the project, then you, you're then are in, in the, the lead agency role. And you're responsible for considering the environmental, the potential environmental effects of, of the project. And then as part of that process is to, through, through a public disclosure process, it's to disclose the potential environmental impacts to, to the public and, and, and other entities and agencies that maybe may have jurisdiction over those resources. And then if that study identifies impacts that may rise to a level of significance, then to evaluate if there are means to mitigate for those, those impacts to make them less than, less than significant. So in, in compliance with that, the city has contracted again with Ascent Environmental to prepare, to prepare an initial study, the I S of, of the I S M N D. And then as a result, that initial study mitigated negative declaration has been prepared. So I'll recap the, the findings here real briefly. Number one, there were five elements of, of, five resources really that had a, the potential for a significant impact. And those were biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, transportation, and tribal cultural resources. Now, those, those potential impacts have been addressed with mitigated negative declaration and mitigation measures implemented, and that's part of what you'll be approving tonight. Second, there were other aspects, other resources that were identified to have a less than significant impact. Those are listed here. And then four items or four resources that the study concluded there was no, no impact. So go over the environmental review process here briefly. So once the, the document is prepared, so the initial study mitigated negative declaration, then that is, is available for, for both a public and public entity review. That was prepared and made available on September 21st with the review period closing October 20th, with comments to be received by that time. There was a notice in the Modesto B on September 21st as well regarding the, the availability of the document, and the city had the, the documents available on, on the website as well. So during that time, there were six, six comments received from community members and from some public entities relating to air quality permitting requirements from the Air Resources Control Board. Potential reliance on what's called the San Joaquin Multi-Species Conservation Plan that came from San Joaquin County Council Governments. And the reason why it's San Joaquin County is because the city's wastewater plant is in San Joaquin County. And then hydrology and water quality permitting requirements coming from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And then there were several, three, three comments from, from public regarding potential for growth, construction-related, and noise-related impacts. From our review of those comments, there was no new additional impacts identified. Only some minor modifications to language in the, the initial study. Typographical errors that were corrected, and those have been corrected in the, the report that is in your, your package right now for, for approval. And likewise, no evidence was received to change the, the outcomes of the, or conclusions of the analysis. So as, as a result of this process, the, the document that you have in your package for consideration is the final initial study mitigated negative declaration. Again, that incorporates the minor text changes. And then associated with that is the mitigation monitoring reporting program, which is a requirement then that's going to be placed on the project. This is something that will be applied to the design process, to the contractor's requirements in terms of, of mitigating for potential impacts, as well as the city's management team as the project moves into, into construction. And so that, that mitigation monitoring reporting program incorporates all the mitigation measures as identified in, in the study. So at this point, our recommendation is to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring reporting program. Approve the Ridge, the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project as described in the, the initial study. And then have the notice of determination signed and filed with San Joaquin County. Again, San Joaquin County because the project's in San Joaquin County. And then file a notice of determination with the State Clearing House. So at this point, if the council has any questions, or myself, or Andrea?
Are there any questions for, before we open to the public hearing? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing, I'm opening the public hearing. Any comments on the recycled project? Saying none, I will close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the council to consider the resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve the project based on the analysis presented.
I'll make a motion to approve item 15.1.
I second the motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 15.1 for public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. Item sixty one, a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Riverbank and Riverbank Mid-Management Employees Association.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. It's my pleasure to present to you the memorandum of understanding that has been negotiated with the middle management group for the City of Riverbank. This agreement was reached through good faith negotiation between the city's negotiating team and the negotiating team of the Riverbank Management Mid-Management Employees Association. I'm going to go over some of the key terms that were agreed to through the course of this negotiation. The term for the agreement is for three years, and that will commence on January first and end on December thirty first of twenty twenty five. There is a cost of living adjustment that was negotiated for each of the three years, with the first being a seven percent cost of living adjustment, which is effective the first full pay period of January twenty twenty three, with subsequent cost of living adjustments of three percent in twenty twenty four and four percent in twenty twenty five. We've also added a fourth tier to our longevity pay. This is additional pay that our employees receive based on their years of service to the City of Riverbank. So for employees who have reached a years of service of twenty five or more, they will receive an additional two and a half percent of gross pay for a total of ten percent additional wages. On-call compensation, currently our staff who is on call during the week and on the weekends receive one hour of standby pay, basically to be on standby in the event that there are any emergencies. We've now negotiated for that to increase from one hour per day to two hours per day, with, of course, the weekends being paid at time and a half and the hours for holidays and Sundays being paid at double time. COVID nineteen hazard pay, we'd like to thank all of our employees for being so dedicated to the city during the COVID nineteen pandemic or during the height of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And because of that, we are glad that we can offer a one-time lump sum payment of eighty five hundred dollars to all of the employees in this bargaining unit. A safety boot and jacket allowance, currently we have a reimbursement of two hundred dollars, and so we've negotiated for a reimbursement of up to two hundred and fifty dollars in order for them to purchase their safety boots, which must be safety in terms of having steel toes for our staff that is working out in the field. And we also can reimburse for jackets as long as they're bright in color so that they're easily identifiable and with the Riverbank City logo. We are adding a bilingual pay incentive for our employees' positions who are designated as bilingual. The majority of these employees will include our office staff who help our customer service, as well as our field staff who can assist residents when they're out in the field, whether it be our streets or water staff. The city is going to designate those positions, the employee doesn't come and request that. And we hold the entire right to remove that designation at any time. In order for them to qualify for the bilingual pay, they will need to go through a written and oral communication test. Deferred compensation to the city contracts with Mission Square ICMA to offer a voluntary deferred compensation plan. If we have an employee who contributes at least a hundred dollars, we've negotiated that the city will match a total of a hundred dollars per pay period. Certification pay, we're extremely happy that a lot of our employees take the opportunity to continue their educational growth and professional growth. So we have added an additional certification that employees can be eligible for in order to receive the certification pay. That's the pesticide applicator license certification. There's five certifications that will make an employee eligible for this additional two and a half percent incentive pay. And that's the maximum, so whether they hold one or multiple certifications, they will only receive two and a half percent. And the financial impact for year one of this agreement is four hundred and twenty three thousand and fifty dollars. And so we are recommending tonight that the city council approve the memorandum of understanding that has been reached between the city and the Riverbank Mid-Management Employees Association, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Were any questions in Maricela? So any public comment on item sixteen point one? So no public comment, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept item sixteen point one as stated.
A second.
You have a motion to approve sixteen point one and second roll, please.
Councilmember Uribe.
Yes.
So member Hernandez.
Yes.
The member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item sixteen two, a resolution to approve an employee agreement between the City of Riverbank and Tamira Alcantara as Assistant City Manager Administrative Services Director and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Mayor and City Council, I'm extremely pleased to be able to present this item to you. When I was appointed as the city manager to serve on your behalf and to serve the Riverbank residents, that did leave a vacancy of our assistant city manager position. We did go through a recruitment with the assistant of an executive recruitment firm in order to make sure that we reached out to a number of individuals who may be interested in this position. One of those which we were extremely pleased to see was Tammy Alcantara, who currently serves as our Assistant Finance Director. She was selected as the finalist after the second round of interviews. So Tammy's agreement is going to be effective starting this Friday, December sixteenth, if approved. Her term would be for three years from the effective date. And her base salary would start off at step A of the new assistant city manager salary range at a hundred and forty nine thousand eight forty seven eighty four. She will receive an annual evaluation in December of each of each year. She is eligible, as our other employees are, for healthcare benefits. She would be responsible to pay fifteen percent of her premium costs, and the city would cover a hundred percent of her vision and dental costs. If she decides that she is going to opt out of our medical insurance and she has proof of insurance coverage under her spouse or under other means, then she would be eligible for a four hundred and fifty dollar taxable cash amount per month. Life insurance is similar to other employees with fifty thousand dollars paid by the city. Deferred compensation, we would match the employee's contribution up to a two percent of gross salary per pay period. Retirement, Tammy is a current employee of the city, and so she already participates in our CalPERS retirement system. So she would continue to contribute her seven percent employee contribution with the city responsible for the employer portion. She would be eligible for the upper management level of vacation, so that will take her to twenty days of vacation. And with as with other employees, she cannot accumulate more than four hundred hours of leave. Sick leave, same as other employees, she'll earn sick leave at the rate of one working day for each month of service. She'll also be eligible for the thirteen observed holidays that the city follows and three floating holidays. She's also eligible for executive leave as other department heads are. And so she'll receive eighty hours of executive leave at the beginning of each fiscal year, and she may cash that out if it's not used. And it does expire as of June thirtieth of each year, so she does lose it if it's not used or she doesn't request a cash out. She's eligible for a cell phone stipend, as is customary for all of our department heads of sixty five dollars per month, or she does have the option to have a city cellphone issued to her. Professional and educational development, the city will continue to pay for any memberships to professional organizations such as ICMA and the City Managers Foundation. But she is also eligible for a reimbursement of any tuition or book costs for any undergraduate or graduate courses that she may take that are related specifically to her job duties. And then, of course, once she does become eligible, she would be eligible for longevity at the same schedule as our other city employees. And so tonight, we would like the city council to consider adopting a resolution which will approve the employment agreement between the city and Tammy Alcantara as the new Assistant City Manager Administrative Services Director. So those duties do include the Director of Finance. She will also serve as a city treasurer and oversee all of the city's investments, as well as oversee human resources and our housing division. So quite a full plate for her, you know, coming from just finance at the current moment to all of these additional duties. But I'm extremely happy, we have worked together for about a year and a half now. So you know that I'm happy to have her on my team, we have worked very well together. And I know that that is going to continue as she moves into this new role. So congratulations, Tammy, if everything gets approved.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Maricela before I open it up to the public? Is there any public input on this item? Saying none, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
Make a motion, we approve item sixteen point two.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the second item sixteen point two. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe.
Yes.
Some member Hernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
I do want to invite Tammy up to the podium to make a comment.
Please make a comment.
Well, it doesn't seem that long ago that I was up here saying I wanted to come in and make a new family. And I really feel like I have a new family here, and I'm really appreciative of the opportunity that is being afforded me and promise that I will do my best at my position. And I gladly work aside Maricela, and she is a hard act to follow. I have some big shoes to fill from her, too. So again, thank you for the opportunity, and I have enjoyed my time here in Riverbank and look forward to my future here.
Thank you, and thank you for being here for us. All right, so we're going to move on to comments, staff comments.
So I do want to remind members of the public that city offices will be closed for the holidays starting September. Quite a few months away from there. December twenty second through this January second, so we will be returning and opening doors on January third. In the meantime, please feel free to email us with any of your needs so that we can help you before our city closure. In addition, I do want to personally thank all of the parks and recreation staff, all of the streets and public work staff that participated and that helped and that worked extremely hard during the rain on our at our parade this past weekend. Most of you, when I saw you, you were absolutely soaked and cold. And I really do appreciate that you were out here, and it actually turned out to be a wonderful event. All of the different floats were absolutely beautiful, and we hope that next year that we have better weather and that everybody outdoes themselves from this year. So thank you very much. And just a final thank you to all of the city council on behalf of the staff for your support during this year. This has been a year of change for all of our council, as well as for our city staff, and we thank you for the opportunity to serve you.
You very much. Councilmember Jones Cruz.
All right, here we go. I find the right buttons and everything. I just want to say it's a pleasure to be up here and serving the community. I think those city workers for the parade, yes, it was amazing, and I am glad that we held it even despite the rain. So I look forward to doing some things with the city and being part of this group up here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hernandez.
I mean, I want to thank the residents for coming out and participating, being significantly engaged. And I know that we're all going to work hard to keep everyone updated as grants come in and through the process of the increases with the fees. To say the least, it has been a year of change, and you know, congratulations to you, to Gabby, to Cody. I mean, everybody that is joining the council now, and I don't feel as new. And thank you to the planning commissioners that are coming in, too. But I look forward to this next year.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Uribe.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had the opportunity, I was in Mexico last week for my brother-in-law's wedding, and I had the opportunity to meet with the Presidente Municipal or aka mayor of our sister city of Tama Sula de Gordiano, I believe is how you pronounce it. And so we, he invited me out to breakfast, and we had a chance to talk for about a good hour, just to how how we're going to collaborate, how we move this collaborate, you know, this this partnership, how we move it forward. So a really cool fact that he gave me is the the Bomberos or the Fire Department is one of the most trusted departments in that city, and you'll find that throughout the the country there. It's probably well-known, it's not like here, right? The fight, the police department is sometimes a little sketchy, right? So the the community really does trust the Bombero, the Fire Department. And so, you know, I asked him like, hey, how can we help each other? And so we're in chats, we want to help each other out, they want to help us out, they want to send us. Somebody chatting there. Somebody on Zoom. So they want to help us out, they want to send us some stuff from from their country. They're having. They okay, you get there? Okay. So where was I? Yeah, so you got to send me over some stuff of where we can possibly help them out. A lot of their equipment is in poor shape. They get a lot of, you know, used items and stuff like that, so we're hoping maybe our our consolidated fire can help out with some of the, if we have any hand-me-downs, or maybe get them a a good discount, help them out, maybe fundraise, they'll send some of their items, maybe we can help fundraise to help them out, and in turn, they they want to help us out. So looking forward to those conversations and a Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, the works, and hopefully see you guys in January.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
I too want to say congratulations and welcome to Tammy, to Leanne and Cody. And thank you to everyone that participated in the craft fair and also the parade. Yes, I got soaked, but it was still a lot of fun. And I was appointed to the League of Cities Public Safety Policy Committee, so I look forward to being on that committee. And I'm looking forward to another productive year as we move our city forward, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First, again, I want to reiterate whatever others have stated about the parks and rec for their Christmas parade, and also Lieutenant Vernon was out there in the rain, did a great job emceeing. And that guy from the North Pole, another fantastic job. I'm really looking forward to the new year, we have a lot that we need to accomplish, and we have a lot of work that we have to do. And although Cody, thank you for being here, Michael, we're going to miss you. And thank you for your years of service here and the dedicated service that you've given to the public over your longevity of almost forty years, if I'm not mistaken. And it doesn't show at all on your face. I want to welcome Leanne to the council. Thank you for being a part of the public that came forward. And I also want to thank all the other council members for their their support and their work. One of the items that will be coming on up, and I think we need to start looking at soon, is the Caltrans Day that'll be here in, is it March? That they're going to come to Riverbank, and you can take anything that you have in your yard and to get rid of. What they want to do is prevent it from being thrown in the highways, whether it's tires, paint, computers, an old RV that you may have had, wanted to get discarded, you know, anything, they'll they'll take it. They have collected something in the neighborhood of two hundred and forty Rose Bowl filled of junk so far. It's our turn to get rid of anything, there's no junk in Riverbank. But just in case you have things like I have in my garage that you can get rid of. We'll have more information on that. They'll help us. They'll help us plant trees, give us plants for trees, which we can then take what we learn in March and apply it to April if we have the event happening in April. So I think it's a win for us with Caltrans coming here a month before our next event. But if we can get the stuff that they are going to give us anyway and apply it to the city, I think we'll have two good events. So I look forward to that. And also, again, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and all the others. At that, we'll go to closed session, consistent of item eighteen point one, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine, five six point nine, administrative citation appeals seventy sixty Bernie Vale Road. Is anyone from the public wishing to make a comment? They have three minutes to comment on this before we go to closed session. Any public comment? We adjourn to closed session. The City Council LRA Board Meeting for City of Riverbank, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty two reconvenes to report from closed session nineteen point one. Report from closed session, item eighteen point one, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation. Direction has been provided to staff. With that, we will adjourn. Our next city council meeting will be January tenth, two thousand and twenty three at six P M. This meeting is now adjourned.